So that's our main goal as SDS teachers to try to get our students employed. We teach them a trade and then we let them go out in the workforce and take that trade and work along with their counterparts within industry. Through our partnership with Kawasaki, not only are they prepared to go into the workforce, but they're also prepared to continue their education through that extensive on-the-job training that they experience at Kawasaki.
I'd say my experiences in the welding shop have been great. A lot of the great people that I've met, and I really enjoy having Mr. Park as my instructor. And the reason I got into it was because my brother was a welder as well, so I might as well try it while I'm in high school. So I think it's a great industry. I've just known you were able to make anything and everything.
Our teacher, he was like in contact about, he told us about the Kawasaki program. And basically, I applied to there, went and took the test, and I passed, so I got my internship.
What we teach them in here, they could go home every day and work with their mothers or fathers in a shop and rebuild cars, rebuild tractors, repair equipment. So the application that we see here is very intuitive to what they're going to do every single day.
So I like to learn, like hands-on and stuff like that, do hands-on projects. It is how this is helping me. I learned like all the processes, like how to set up the machine, like my angles for the welds, just various processes of this. So I'm pretty confident that I'll be able to be good over there.
It really just is a great stepping stone for any type of job you want to do because here in Northeast, Mr. Park teaches us to be on time very, very well. He's very adamant about that.
Well, this is invaluable. So when I was going through high school, this, we didn't have options, like I said, TCA and if you wanted to go to secondary college. So in order to go out in the workforce and gain that experience, not only are we fostering a relationship with industry and those students, we're also fostering a relationship where we might potentially see that return to come back to LPS, whether it's an instructor or the gentleman that are here with us now or alumni at this school. We need that continuation. If we don't have the continuation, we lose the valuable resource we have, which is that knowledge base.
Um, I'd say take it. I mean, you could take it for just a semester if you wanted to, but I think it's a great experience for anybody in high school. I think it'd be awesome to come here and experience the program.
Yeah, we're not wasting our time to not really get a big return on it. We're over here learning and we actually get like a chance to use our knowledge.
The Board of Education, regular meeting for Tuesday, June 25th is called to order. April, would you call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Present.
Mrs. Danick?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Present.
Ms. Mumgaard?
Here.
Dr. Rowner?
Here.
Mr. Shavastov?
Present.
The Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted and available on the wall at the main entrance if you would like to read it. Approval of minutes, we have minutes from our June 11th, 2024 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, they stand as a published. Number six, special reports and presentations. Kathy?
Thank you, Dr. Rowner. For those who don't know, we have a longstanding LPS product, who's a graduate in 1982 of Lincoln Northeast, also my alma mater. And I've known this gentleman for most of my involvement with Lincoln Public Schools, but mostly I remember him when he mentored my daughter, who was a math teacher by trade, and the help he gave her and the advice he gave her, and it's helped her along her career. I think we don't, we think things are only finite with math, but what I've discovered about math is the dreamers of the world can add. The dreamers of the world know what infinity is, and the dreamers of the world know that there's always one thing that comes next. So, Dr. Rowner, would you please join me at the podium? Or excuse me, Dr. Larson?
No.
Well, I can take Dr. Rowner with me too, and we can both do it. So there you go. And I also did some homework. So Dr. Larson is not only noted for leading LPS's math department for more than 20 years, but he's also the only K-12 math instructor who's ever been the president of the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics, and he did that from 2016 to 2018. He's also authored or co-authored nine books, and titillating talents or titillating titles of those books include Math Instruction, Planning Instruction, Assessments, Homework and Grading, and Balancing the Equation. But the irony of this, you need all of those things to be a really good educator, and that is what I say most about Dr. Matt Larson. So in the form of a motion, I will read the following proclamation to send my dear friend off into retirement, where I hope he's going to write some more books and give some more presentations and find time to make all of us laugh once more. Whereas, Dr. Larson has throughout his career exhibited a commitment to excellence in public education, serving as an inspiration to educators and administrators alike. And whereas, Dr. Larson worked with others to establish the first set of curricular objectives, common assessments, grading practices, and professional learning community work in the curricular area. And whereas, Dr. Larson, in his dedication and outstanding contributions, led a team of instructional directors to quickly and successfully develop and implement virtual, hybrid, and in-person instruction during a historic pandemic at a time when many schools across this nation were shut down for over a year. And whereas, Dr. Larson collaborated with a team of instructional leaders to thoroughly develop district-wide procedures and practices to address the identified concerns of increased student behavior. And whereas, Dr. Larson has garnered the respect of colleagues in Lincoln, the state of Nebraska, and across the United States, exhibiting his expertise in mathematics education through co-authoring books and journals and speaking engagements. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Lincoln Board of Education does hereby congratulate Lincoln Public Schools Associate Superintendent for Educational Services, Dr. Matt Larson, on a long and distinguished career, and professes sincere gratitude to him for his years of service to the staff, students, families, and the community of Lincoln. Signed by Dr. Bob Rowner, our board president, and Dr. Paul Gosman, Superintendent of Schools. Thank you, Dr. Larson.
Of course, I have the advantage over John in that I now knew this was going to happen. So yes, I have remarks prepared, so buckle up. All right, no. I want to thank the board, I really do, for this recognition. As Dr. Neal indicated two weeks ago tonight, you are a very unique board, there is no question about that. But one of your unique strengths is that each and every one of you is a passionate advocate for public education, and more importantly, each and every student. And our community is a better place because of your service. I've always appreciated your support, and that goes for some former board members as well, notably Doug Evans, Ed Zimmer, Marion Price, and of course, Connie Duncan. So I thank all of them, in addition to you, for their support. I also want to thank all the instructional directors, both past and present. Most of them are on vacation, which was a smart move, but a few are here tonight. And the reality is that much of the work that ensures that your vision gets done and accomplished is done by and through them. We owe them a great debt of gratitude. They prevent this coherent school district from devolving into a loose federation of 70 sites, and much of their work simply goes unseen, but it's greatly appreciated, and I thank them for all they do. Another group that needs to be thanked would be Ashley Perez, Laura Maxwell, April Douglas, Michaela Gray. They are the executive assistants to the superintendent and the associate superintendents, and they make us all look vastly more competent and prepared than we are most of the time. And so again, it's another group of unsung heroes. And I want to thank some of the leaders I had the opportunity over time to work with who mentored me, and this is not, you know, an exhaustive list, but I certainly want to thank Dr. Scoe. He used to be superintendent. I'm like old, and so some of you will remember him. Dr. Scoe, Dr. Moore, Dr. Joel, I had two great directors of curriculum in, Dr. Jacobson and Dr. Miller, and I thank all of them for their mentorship. Now, over the last couple of years, I've had an opportunity to work with another group of leaders, and I really appreciate and respect them, and that group includes Dr. Price, Dr. Olson, Dr. Salem. Learned a lot from them, but there are two people I want to kind of single out, because it feels like the three of us, another two people and myself, while we had the support of dozens of people, we essentially navigated uncharted waters through the pandemic. And the water was a little rough, and we took on some water at times, but we got through it, and that would be Dr. Stanish and Mindy Burbach. Great people. Okay, finally, and this is a big one, I need to thank my wife Tammy. She's at home watching like she always does, and some of you probably think I say everything that I think, and the reality is, I don't. There is a lot of stuff, believe it or not, that I do not say. But here's the deal, I save the really good stuff for when I get home and I share it with her. And so for nearly 40 years, she has had to absorb all of that when I get home from, you know, a typical day, and so I do appreciate her support as well. So with that, it's been a privilege to serve the students, the staff, and the parents of the Lincoln Public Schools, and I thank you.
Lanny?
Second.
Do we have some comments? I'm guessing yes, Lanny.
Thank you, President Rowner. I first met Dr. Larson about 25 years ago when he was the curriculum specialist for math. I was a parent volunteer on the LPS Community Curriculum Council. As a fellow math nerd, I watched his presentations very closely. It was immediately obvious that he was highly intelligent, a clear communicator, and that he was dedicated to the mission of educating kids to the best of our ability. Those qualities in him have only grown over time. I learned a lot from Dr. Larson over the next decade or so that I served on that council, and I continued to learn from him as a school board member. Flash forward to four years ago, Dr. Larson is now the Associate Superintendent for Instruction, and I begin a three-year run as chair of our Student Learning and Technology Committee. This results in us having frequent conversations, often daily, especially with the pandemic. Those same qualities I had noticed years earlier were still apparent, and now I could add new ones to the list: steady leadership, thoughtful innovation, and unwavering compassion for our students and staff. Matt, it has been an incredible honor to know you, and to work with you, and to learn from you. Thank you for your decades of service to public education and Lincoln's children.
Any others? Okay. Annie?
Lanny has phrased it really, really well. I just want to say that when I asked you what your kind of favorite memory, what you were so most proud of doing, and it was getting us through the pandemic, and I told you then and I will tell you again now, that cannot thank you and all that worked on it, but I'll never forget coming into my first meeting, we were a little shell shocked, shell shocked, and you guys put out this 142-page plan, and it was like, when did you guys sleep in the last little bit of time? And I, you know, the other thing is like knowing that we, you have always had our back to make sure that we may be as passionate as we can be, but that we don't go crazy, and that, I mean truly, there have been ideas that you can just tell by Matt, looks on Matt's face, it's like, yeah, I'll back down on that one maybe for just a minute or so. But it's been a pleasure to have you, you know, know that I'm on the same team as you and have you have our backs, and I will miss that greatly. So thank you for all that you have given to helping a person from the community come in and understand how the heck to do the math here. So thank you.
Don?
Matt, I know that the decision to retire could have come several years ago, and I also wanted to call out what a gift especially these last few years have been as we navigated a pandemic, superintendent transition, having your steady hand at the tiller. I would also note just how incredible it was that we had this 100-year event, and basically over spring break, you and your staff completely created 100% remote learning, which is just an incredible, incredible achievement. Again, appreciating your steady hand, your leadership, but also noting that your intelligence, your technical knowledge, your passion, and your compassion have just all been gifts to our district. And I know that there are so many things we can point to at LPS that we do well and say we do that because of Dr. Larson. Thank you so much for your service to our kids.
Piyush?
So I'll talk about my experience from before I was on the board to kind of support what has been already said, you know, during the pandemic. And I was looking at it from my daughter's perspective, how smoothly things went when things were in chaos nationwide, and I know that my daughter did not experience much or any learning loss, so thank you for everything you did. And then once I got on this board, I was told, if you ever have any questions, just email Dr. Matt Larson. So that's exactly what I've been doing. Anytime I had a question, I would email Dr. Larson. It didn't matter what time of the day it was, within a few minutes, I would have a reply from him with the answer, or say, okay, that one's for Sarah, okay, Sarah, you go for it, or this one, I'll copy X, Y, Z. And, you know, you were always great at educating me, and you always got to the heart of the question and gave a very, you know, very succinct answer to the question that I had. So I'm going to miss working with you, and thank you very much for everything you've done for me personally, and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Berb?
Well, everybody said exactly what should be said. I just want to say that we're really lucky to have a national math rock star here, going and leading not just our math instruction, but being one of those critical players in leading this district. You make us, all of us up here, look really good, and if we don't have you, well, I know that your replacements will do well, it's going to be hard. I'm sorry, it's going to be hard. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you for getting us through not just the pandemic, but I can just think of all sorts of crazy little crises that I've called and other people have called, and you're always coming up with solutions, so thank you.
So I'm just going to end this with a term of endearment, and this is really for your wife, from someone who has a husband who has to listen to me when I come home from any kind of meeting and scream and holler. But Tammy, we really appreciate you sharing, Matt, with us, because that gift of your family being support is very, very, very important to making your job successful. So I wish you both to take some time, enjoy some mountains maybe. I hear that you have a passion for mountains. And mostly, don't forget, come back and tell us some humorous stories again. We will miss you. Thank you.
Well, the only other thing I'd add is, being one of the analytical guys, I appreciate having a math guy in the room. The thing that stands out the most to me though, I would say with the COVID pandemic, we were in uncharted territory with conflicting guidance coming from everywhere. We spent a lot of time in meetings, and the thing that really stood out to me was how you and Liz were really good about disagreeing constructively. And what came out of that was a much better plan, and not a lot of people are good at that, and you two especially were really good at that. And I think there's a lot of time in meetings where what came out, I would argue our approach was some of the best in the country, and I think you guys deserve a lot of credit for that. So thanks.
April, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgaard?
Yes.
Mr. Shavastov?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes. Our next item is public comment. Blue cards are available at the entrance for those wishing to speak. Each speaker is allowed three minutes and may provide printed materials to the board. Please begin your remarks by introducing yourself, your address, the name of any organization you are representing, and we will inform you when one minute remains. I have one blue card from Richard Schmeling.
Just chair of roles. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and superintendent. My name is Richard Schmeling, and I'm going to request that I have another couple of extra minutes, because this is a somewhat complex subject. If I'm the only person with a blue card, maybe you can give me a little bit more.
Okay, we'll give you a minute extra.
All right. I am the president of an organization called Citizens for Improved Transit, and one of the things our group does is try to improve the Startran bus system here in Lincoln. We do fundraising, and we buy bus passes from Startran, and we give them out to over 20 social service agencies in Lincoln and Lincoln Public Schools. Lincoln Public Schools are a big user of those bus passes, and there are a lot of kids, as you know, in the school system that are low income, the families are struggling, and we feel that we're helping make sure these kids go to school. To me, there's something very basic about education, and that is, if the kid doesn't go to school, he isn't learning. And I'm giving away my age, but I remember my first grade reading book, and we talked about Dick and Jane. And if Dick and Jane can't get to school, the district, in spite of all the wonderful instructors, in spite of all the wonderful programs, in spite of everything, those kids aren't learning. I don't see anything in the budget that addresses the concern that I have raised repeatedly before this board, and that is, I'd like to see you budget some money so that the district can purchase those Startran bus passes and give them out to the students. You have a wonderful lady, Andrea Phillips, who is the head of Social Workers, and she is the czar of the bus passes. She's doing a great job of making sure the bus passes are equitably distributed among the schools. Here's a statistic that I think is kind of important. Lincoln Public Schools, at this time, transport only 33% of the students by school bus. In Omaha, it's 78%. Sioux Falls, South Dakota, has a system whereby all the public school students ride public transit free, and that's year-round. Omaha Public Schools recently initiated a program where Omaha Public School students ride the Omaha bus system for free. I've tried to get something going here in Lincoln, and quite frankly, Startran management hasn't really reached out to you the way they should, and I would like to see something worked out. What happened in Omaha is they postulated that there are 2,740 students during the past year that rode the bus to and from school. They paid Omaha Metro Transit $250,000, and those kids essentially ride free. I'd like to see Lincoln replicate that, and I don't think it would be $250,000 for Lincoln because we have fewer students in our district than Omaha has. But I, not that C-FIT doesn't want to continue to support the program, not that we will back out of it, but in addition to C-FIT funding things, they're tapping the Lincoln Public Schools Foundation, and I think this is something that ought to be in your budget, and I'm going to urge you to go ahead and do that. And I'll end with this note, and Dr. Salem, you can't help it. What's a pig's favorite karate move? A pork chop. Thank you for your time.
Our next item is the consent agenda. Sorry, let me keep it hibernated here. Are there any items removed from the consent agenda? Is there a motion for approval of the remaining items? Kathy?
I approve of the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Don?
I second.
Do we have any conflict statements or comments? Piyush?
I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on Agenda Item 8.2A as to all matters identified in and reflected by my separate potential conflict of interest statement filed herewith. My vote in favor of consent is a vote in favor of all other consent items, except those identified in that statement upon which I have and do hereby abstain.
Okay. I also have a conflict statement. I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on Agenda Item 8.2A as to all matters identified in and reflected by my separate potential conflict of interest statement filed herewith. My vote in favor of consent is a vote in favor of all other consent items, except those identified in that statement upon which I have and do hereby abstain.
April, would you? April, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgaard?
Yes.
Mr. Shavastov?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Dr. Rauner?
Yes. Next, we have first reading, Item 9.1.1, newly annexed property of the city of Lincoln. Barb?
Yes, I'll turn this over to Liz Standish.
Um, yes, you see before you an annexation that is just south of I-80 and about 70th Street. It is the majority and industrial area for this annexation. If there were students there, which we don't anticipate, there would be, attend Norwood Park, Dawes, and Northeast High School.
Is there any discussion? This item will come back to us at our next meeting. Next, we have Item 9.1.2, the 2024-2025 Transportation Plan. And Barb?
Yes, um, I assume that Phil's going to do the presentation?
Exactly, yes.
So we'll welcome Phil Skrupa. I'm so sorry.
So you see on your screens the 2024-2025 pupil transportation plan. And just some overview of what our mission is here at LPS Transportation. It is to provide safe and timely student transportation to and from assigned schools and activities according to district policies. And once again, we like to consider the school bus an extension of the classroom. In fact, we utilize a motto that is the first and last classroom of the day. So some quick statistics that we will run through regarding transportation from the previous year. We transported a total of 3,939 students in the 2023-24 school year, which was a significant increase over the previous year. Of those, 28% or 1,094 were regular education students, including TCA, Arts and Humanities, Science Focus, the Bay. 36% or 1,425 were special education students. That also includes certain programs like the Don Sherrill, Nurnberger, Yankee Hill, the ISP, the Independence Academy, programs like that that are all encompassed within special education. 24 and 1/2% or 966 were early childhood students. 11 and 1/2% were, or 454 were English language learners, which is also an increase over the previous year. We ran 1,682,306 route miles during the school year, as well as 166,095 miles for activities and athletics. At the end of the school year, we were left with 134 total drivers, 116 of which were route drivers, six were conflicting trip drivers, six subs, and six shared route drivers, meaning two drivers to cover one route. They share a route. We had 73 paraprofessionals, 64 of which were regular route paras, seven subs, two shared route paras. So a total of 126 routes and 787 runs for the previous school year. So the trends in our ridership, we noticed in the focus program, ridership averaged about 111 in the AM as well as the PM. Art, of those breaking further down, Arts and Humanities were 85, Science Focus Program 26. TCA ridership averaged about 103 in the morning. It tailed off as the day went on, 56 in the midday and 54 in the PM. We did see ridership increases in early childhood and special education as well as ELL during the last school year. So as we came into the previous school year, we were still facing a large driver shortage, which is something that has gone on for a few years now. And it's not just us. It is other people in the industry that are struggling to get CDL drivers. We also experienced that same shortage from our vendor that we've utilized to help support our route needs the last several years, known as First Student. The transportation team did work diligently last year to consolidate some routes as much as they could from 131 down to 126 to try to match our staffing availability. Currently projecting for the coming school year, we're looking at about 127 routes. The plan would be, as staffing would allow, to build back up to a level more like 150 routes. But that's something that will only be able to be accomplished as staffing allows. Some of the implications of our consolidated route plan, it inevitably means that route times or ride times increase. There are only so many variables, and one of those is time. And so when we're trying to do more with less folks, that means longer rides. So policy typically has been to try to keep bus rides right at an hour or less. With the current situation, there are times when some, those rides can't exceed an hour, could even be potentially up to an hour and a half. That also means potential for late buses based on the staff absences and planning for that day. It increases overtime for those that have to make up or cover where we don't have folks. We always worry about the potential for burning out staff that are working extra to get the job done each and every day. And I want to make sure we appreciate those folks that do work extra to make sure this job gets done every day. I know it's a lot, and we very much appreciate their efforts to do that. You know, when we're running very tight runtimes, any, any extra situation could increase delays, like weather is a good example. When you're already running tight, a bad weather day can certainly make that worse, so. The state of Nebraska requires any school bus driver to have a commercial driver's license to drive a school bus. So our current staffing levels, if we were hoping to someday return to that goal of 150 routes, we're approximately 31 drivers short of that goal as we stand today. That's obviously a moving target from day to day, but that's where it stands today. We're currently 11 drivers short for our consolidated route staffing plan on a day-to-day basis. So our First Student contract allows for up to 20 drivers. Now, they are facing some similar struggles to what we are in terms of being able to, to supply the workforce. So we began last year with eight drivers committed from them. We finished the year with 12. This year, despite, there's some turmoil with what's going on in Omaha with busing up their contracts and so forth. So we have not been able to secure a commitment from them on the number of drivers they'll be able to provide for this coming school year. We're still working with them to try to see what they'll be able to provide. And of course, the contract utilization will be determined throughout the summer based on our staffing levels. We'll only want to use the contractors that we have to, to make up for the difference. And obviously, utilizing a contractor like First Student costs significantly more than using our folks in-house, LPS employees. Talking about the vehicles we have in our fleet, we currently have two small vehicles, minivans. We've got a, a number of Type A, the smaller mini buses like you see up there. We've got quite a few of the Type C buses. And those, we've kind of evolved over time into purchasing buses that are very versatile. I call them like a Swiss Army Knife type bus. They are large enough to haul a number of students, but yet they all come with wheelchair lifts, the way we configure and purchase them now. They come full of seats, which have the, the built-in five-point harness seating capability within them for like early childhood students. So they're very versatile in, in the types of routes that they can serve and the students that they can transport throughout the day. Then you see the large Type D bus, which is like for regular education routes, corner stops, larger numbers, also for activities and athletics. Those are used primarily for those purposes. Our fleet age has gotten better due to the hard work of this board and funding our depreciation account. So our current fleet age averages about 12 years, which is an improvement over years past. And we've recently been awarded the rebate program for the purchase of three new electric buses. And I will say that in, in doing the research regarding those buses, we've made the decision that we will be pursuing those Type A or those mini-type buses for that purpose. There are a number of reasons for that that I can get into if you have questions about that. But that's what our current direction is for our EVs that we expect to get here sometime soon. This just goes over our, our Transportation Board Policy 3710 about who qualifies for education. Obviously, there's some criteria to qualify for a regular education ride, and that's four miles outside of the school. But yet, within that school's attendance boundary, so it's, there's not a lot of that, but, but we still do some of that. Special education students require IEP, which specifies that transportation be in that plan. And then any other situations that the board deems, you know, beneficial for us to provide transportation for in special circumstances. So the 2024-25 Transportation Plan, we anticipate increases, and we have budget requests for two new EC sites with two classrooms each. We're, as I understand it, those may not come online until second semester of this coming school year, but we are anticipating that. There is always the increase in things like parts to cover repairs and service on buses. That's always a moving target. We never know what parts we're gonna need, what they're gonna cost. But we look at past years to try to project what that might be. And so that's where that comes from. We're also adding a couple of runs between Standing Bear and TCA, as well as some additional runs for special education at Huntington and Southwest. Those will be absorbed within our already operational budget as it stands, so. There's a couple of attachments that are included that you can look at. One's the budget breakdown, and another is the list of the runs that we're proposing for the coming school year. So those should be included as well. So at this point, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those for you.
Kathy?
So I'm going back to Policy 3710.
Sure.
Because when we talk about it, when it says four miles, who's, who set four miles?
That's state, that's state law.
I just wanted the community to understand, we didn't set that, that big number. The state set that.
Yep, that's a state law.
And we have to provide special education students, if they're identified and they're IEP, correct?
That's correct.
And the last one is, when we move kids out of their attendance areas, it is just the board decided we're gonna bus this school and not that school. But it's actually, a school is overcrowded. We've moved students to another school that may have room, and they're provided transportation for that.
Absolutely correct. The one example would have been Dawes. We had a section of students that were on around 37th and Cornhusker that we transported over to Dawes. There's another one over in the Bicentennial Estates area that we had provided transportation for in the past to a facility that was less crowded. Another example is the, the students from the Air Park area that we transported into Sco. Because of the barrier of Highway 34, we made the decision that we were gonna transport them many years ago as well.
And I think that's like nine miles anyway. So we've assigned them. Because there is no middle school in Air Park, correct? So as we go through this, when we talk about transportation, we really provide the bare needs or the, the bare bones of a transportation to this district. Parents have taken that responsibility largely on their own. So when we look at if we had to add transportation dollars to fund 60 to 80% of our students, would we be able to find drivers?
Absolutely not. So I can tell you anecdotally, you know, the gentleman mentioned the way Omaha does that. They only provide through OPS transportation for special needs students. They contract with outside contractors for all of their regular education transportation that they provide. So they're spending a lot of money on a contractor. I know they've recently lost their current contractor, which was STA, Student Transportation of America. They're going with a new contractor that hasn't been in this market previously called Zoom. That's coming into the market to provide that moving forward. All of these entities are competing for the same pool of potential applicants for, for driver positions. And we're one of them that's competing.
What I recall from like 20 years ago, Don might remember this because it was our first term, and we had a colleague that wanted us to, to farm out all of our transportation. And I said, we can't afford to farm it out. And he goes, well, we're gonna do an RFP. I said, I'm all for that. And it came back even higher at that time than the 45% premium that you're paying now when we contract out some routes. So I just wanna say thank you for keeping this under control. I wish we could get you more drivers. So my last question is, do you have any more hiring fares or any opportunities for people who want to be bus drivers?
Great question. So I will tell you some good news. So the, the news hit about the increase in the driver wage here within the last couple of weeks. Consequently, we had a hiring fare right after that came out. And I would say that was one of the most productive hiring fares we've seen in the last several. Out of that hiring fare, we came up with 10 potential candidates for driving positions for our department. So I think that increase in the pay was very effective in, in kind of getting the word out to people who might want a job that fits, you know, their lifestyle or their needs, so. I can report that positive news.
Thank you, Mr. Skrupa.
You bet. And we do have another one coming up in July, by the way. So we're hoping that one's equally.
July when, do you know?
I don't remember the date, July 12?
July, I have it in my fingertips. July 16 at North Star High School. And that's from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And the information.
Is available on our district website. And I just typed in the word "fair", and it took me to the information.
There we go. Thank you.
So we'll hope we have a similar outcome.
Perfect.
Annie?
So you said 150 routes. First of all, every time this comes up, and I, I truly try to look at the attachments. And it's like, I, I, it's all like.
Kind of mind-boggling.
It's very mind-boggling. So my kudos to who has to figure all that out, the logistics of it. The question is, 150 would be your desired route.
Correct.
We're at 127.
Correct.
What is the process of figuring out? So that's, you know, 23 missing there. I mean, that we're not doing. How, what is the process of like, How, what is the process of like, how do we figure, how do you figure out how to condense that? I mean, are we losing just routes and we just have to?
Yeah, sometimes we have to say no. You know, we, we aren't able to accommodate every request that might come in. There are a lot of hardships that we'd like to try to accommodate. I'm sure at some point, maybe the board would like to go shorter than four miles away from a school of attendance, like it was many years ago in the district. It's just a case of, you know, we don't want kids to be on a bus for more than an hour. But currently, a lot of them are because of that. So it's adding routes to make each of those current routes smaller than what they are now. A lot of times, you know, we, we, we structure routes so that they run back to back in terms of school bell times. So we'll have a, a route packed full of kids getting into an eight o'clock school. Then that bus has to turn right back around and go pack itself full of kids to get to a nine o'clock school. And unfortunately, they don't always make it by nine o'clock. So if we were able to expand and add more routes, it would take the pressure off the existing ones in order to meet our goals of getting the kids to where we want to in a, in a more timely fashion.
Well, thank you for, you know, that realizing the hard, hardships that we have to kind of figure out how to do it. The other question is, I, and maybe this is, I don't mean this to be an idle question, but if it's, we consider it the first classroom and the last classroom of what are we doing to actively, could we actively? I, I work for an institution that we've talked about when they're going back on the buses or driving to and from to come visit, giving activities to be done on the buses. Do we have a process for that or is that something we could think about? Yes?
Thinking back, and Phil can add to us, the first and the last classroom of the day, the intent of that is really more in the relationship base. Having the driver know every student's name, greet every student at the door. We haven't tried to capture that as instructional time. I think that'd be a very heavy lift because the driver's busy driving and there's often not a pair on the bus.
No, I'm not saying instructional time. I'm like saying more of using it as, again, I think it'd be a student learning conversation, but as a time of kind of, no, I'm not thinking instructional. I'm thinking more of that relationship of using it as some positive, I don't know. Maybe I camp on my brain. I'm thinking as a parent, if my kid is on the bus for an hour and a half, is there any way that on that bus, there's some positive use of that time? Whether it's like, sit on this side to do homework, sit on this side to look at your phone, you know, something like that so that there could be some focused, whatever. I think it's a bigger conversation than I might suggest goes to student learning. And, but, and I'm not saying next year, believe me. It's just more of an idea and maybe if something could be thought about.
One thing I'll add is our staff does a good job of engaging with the students. They do offer them opportunities to do homework if they have that to do on the bus. Sometimes depending on the age of the, of the students, we may have, you know, a pair who engages them in, in some learning activities that are provided by their, their counterparts at the school and so forth. So I know they work very closely with school staffs to help manage expectations, behaviors, you know, things to keep them occupied and stimulated during the ride to make it more successful. You know, especially, it's hard to sit in one place for an hour or more, you know? So we need to have something to keep them occupied and, and focused. And so our staff does a very good job of working with the schools to help provide some of that.
Yes, I'm trying to say if there's anything else we can do to help with that, I'm willing to give some time, some thought.
Great, perfect. This item will come back to us at our next meeting. Thank you. Next, we have item nine-point-one-point-three legislative guidelines. Piyush?
I'd like to request Dr. John Skretta to talk to us about this. Like to point out that Dr. Skretta has graciously accepted to come and give us this update, even though he does not start officially in this position until next month. So thank you for doing that.
I appreciate that. It's, it's your bonus round of Skretta time, I guess. I really want to start by thanking our board members who serve on the Grace Committee. Piyush is our chair and then Barbier and Kathy Danik are our board members. Want to thank you for your leadership in articulating, reaffirming and reinforcing these guidelines that are so important for our work. Also, just a prefatory note, normally late May and June, especially after a short legislative session, it's a pretty sedate. There's not a lot of, you know, just work going on around legislation. Senators typically would not have even started looking at or digging into their proposed interim studies. I think it's safe to say this year and this summer feels different. And there's a heightened sense of urgency around the adoption of these guidelines, given the looming call for a special session anticipated to occur late July through early August. So with that said, the annual summer adoption of legislative guidelines follows longstanding LPS precedent and helps to reaffirm key policy priority areas for the board, in particular, as it relates to the unicameral. This provides essential direction and guidance in our government relations work, helps our district maintain a proactive stance. And so we are able to affirm support for legislation that aligns. And note that we may oppose legislation contrary to these guidelines. There are several minor, yet significant changes to the guidelines that are up tonight for first reading. There are two additions to the prefatory or preamble statements. One of those incorporates the LPS mission statement in the guidelines. And the second is an affirmative statement regarding the importance of our teachers and staff. Additionally, items eight and twelve now include the addition of early childhood as requested. This is an important policy priority area for us. It's reflected in our new, newly adopted strategic plan for twenty-four through twenty-nine in the student well-being and outcomes area. Item eleven on the legislative guidelines makes more explicit the rationale for the operational necessity of being able to cash flow through sufficient fiscal reserves. Item fourteen clarifies our supportive relationship with ESU eighteen and Nebraska ESUs broadly. If I could, I also wanted to allude to a couple of comments board members made during the budget work session regarding NASB standing positions. And just happy to note, and this will resonate, standing position eighty-six asserts the need for local control for public PK-12 school districts. And NASB standing legislative position twelve articulates the importance of early childhood education. Think that alignment is great, fosters synergy and we're stronger together. And so with that, I would answer any questions or any, anything you'd like to ask about related to those guidelines, if you have any.
Okay, Lanny?
Thank you, President Rowner. I fully support these legislative guidelines and the changes. In particular, I am pleased to see us lead with our mission statement. It's a great addition that emphasizes why we advocate for public education at the legislature. We're advocating for our students' future.
Any other discussion?
Says it all.
All right. Good summary. Thanks, John. This item will come back to us at our next meeting. Next, we have item nine-point-two-point-one, CLC agreements with Parks and Rec, Malone Center, Northeast Family Center, Cedars, YMCA, Civic Nebraska, Willard Community Center, LHA, Boys and Girls Club and Family Service. Nola?
So this is just a renewal of our regular contracts with our ten CLC lead agencies. I do want to point out that as we enter the twenty-fifth year of CLCs in LPS, some of these partners have been with us since the beginning. The dollar amounts are different for each organization and those are influenced by how many schools each agency serves and how many students are served at each of those schools. We don't have any new schools to be added to CLCs this year and we don't have any changes with our lead agencies. Questions?
Barb?
Could you remind us how many schools have CLCs?
Yep, twenty-nine schools.
And so a lot of parents utilize CLCs for before and after-school care. Are there other kinds of options at those schools that don't have CLCs?
Yes, so actually all of our elementary and middle schools throughout the district have a before and after-school provider. Twenty-nine of them are under the CLC umbrella. All of them have a paid before and after-school program. They happen to be the same organization. So family service may be serving CLC schools as well as our non-CLC schools. And so families necessarily don't know always which schools are CLC and which are not. But they all have some sort of an option.
That is wonderful and that is so really important for our working parents. My son did CLC all through elementary and really enjoyed it. Learned so many different things, tennis and chess and all, all sorts of fun things. So CLCs are very enriching for our children and make school fun. And when school's fun, then you're more likely to stick with it.
Absolutely.
Kathy?
So Nola, you know, I'm a giant fan of, of CLCs. The Safe and Successful Kids Center Local with the City of Lincoln helps that partnership of, of providing for the security part of that, which they call the protective part. But what I really want to do is say congratulations because our CLCs were recognized nationally. Am I correct?
That's correct, yes.
For providing outstanding before and after-school programming. And it was the first time that award was given, was it in Washington DC?
It, we'll be, we'll be traveling to DC in several weeks to receive the Engage Every Student Award from the Department of Education. It's the first year that Secretary Cordona has created this award. And the effort of the award is really to, we had to provide a lot of data about the students that we serve. And one of the criteria was even that we were serving twenty percent more students than we served the year before, which they measured post-pandemic. So that's been a little bit of a challenge. And again, I want to recognize our partners in doing that because they're the ones who are really doing the heavy lift at the, at the schools day to day and making sure that we're serving all of the students who need us every day after school.
My granddaughter goes to the CLC at Dawes and absolutely loves it. And so she's not the first one that's loved it, but it, it's a remarkable, remarkable little bit of time that those students have changed from just a before and after-school program, but to add an educational component that is helping these kids be more successful. And my first interaction with them was my first, my first month on the Board of Education was at Saratoga Elementary. And the fun part of that was I got to recognize about a thousand volunteer hours of students from Southeast at Saratoga. And I think they're still volunteering because they were doing it for citizenship issues. But the kids came back to volunteer with the students after their time was up that they had to be there. But more importantly, they had about a thousand people, a thousand hours of adults also volunteering. That was in two thousand and one and we've just continued to grow. I've seen CLCs in other parts of the country. I agree with Dr. Cordona. We are the best in the country. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Was it Annie? Okay, all right. It's going to come back to us at our next meeting. Thanks, Nola. Next, we have item nine-point-two-point-two, Policy Series Three Thousand, Four Thousand, Five Thousand, Six Thousand, Eight Thousand. Who's taking that one on?
Dr. Larson will take this one this evening.
Thank you. So annually at this time of year, we bring to you a number of policy edits or modifications that are a result of state legislation. And tonight, that's what you have before you. You have three new regulations, one new policy and edits to twelve other policies and/or regulations. These are all a direct consequence of the past unicameral session. Time is always a challenge on these because when the session closed and then we get legal advice and then the associate superintendents work on the respective policies or regulations that need to be adjusted. So it doesn't always go through the normal committee review process. But I want to assure you that the recommended changes were all recommended by legal counsel. And after we made changes to our own policies or regulations, legal counsel once again reviewed them to ensure that we're consistent with new law. And part of that challenge is that these policies and regulations to be, you know, supportive of new legislation need to be in place by July nineteenth. We don't have another board meeting before July nineteenth. So one of the special requests tonight is that we move this to action and approve it. And with that, we'll all kind of moderate, but we'll all answer any questions you might have over any of these policies or regulations.
Okay, Lanny?
I move that we waive second reading and approve this agenda item.
Kathy?
I'd second that motion.
Is there any discussion? Don?
Recognize the need to get our language into line with new legislation. Are there any substantive changes to our practices?
My answer is going to be no. I mean, some of these things we were really close to. We just had to change a little bit of wording. Many of the practices are things we currently do. For example, we've added a regulation on student religious freedom. We have always allowed students spaces in our schools to practice their beliefs. We've set that aside and done that. So in some sense, what much of this does is it codifies our current practice. So there's, there's nothing substantial in the list from my perspective.
Okay, April, will you call the roll?
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Yes.
Mr. Shavasteh?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes. Next, we have ten second reading recommended for action from board committees. Ten-point-one-point-one, Policy Thirty-five Hundred Funds Management. Do we have a motion for approval? Kathy?
Move approval of item ten-point-one-point-one, Policy Thirty-five Hundred Funds Management.
Do we have a second? Barb?
I second that.
And just, just a clarification, this was just to bring it up to date with another policy that, that we had that amount and we were making them match so that they were identical.
All right, April, will you call the roll?
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Yes.
Mr. Shavasteh?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes. Next, we have item ten-point-one-point-two, Student Calendar for Twenty Twenty-Five, Twenty Twenty-Six. Do I have a motion for approval? Annie?
I move we approve ten-point-one-point-two, Student Calendar for Twenty Five, Twenty Six.
Okay, Barb?
I second that.
Is there any discussion? Lanny?
I wanted to take a minute to say thank you to Annie for representing us on the calendar committee. I sometimes joke that when you joined the school board, you were offered a choice between serving on the calendar committee or being in charge of calling snow days.
I took the committee.
Of course, the board isn't involved in the decision to call snow days, but no one wants to risk it, so they grab calendar committee and we fill a difficult post. Annie, not only have you taken on a difficult role, you've thrived in it. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Lanny.
All right. April, will you call the roll?
Mr. Shavasteh?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes. Next, for the superintendent, item ten-point-two-point-one, Interlocal Cooperation Act Agreement between Lincoln Public Schools and ESU eighteen for core services. Do I have a motion for approval? Kathy?
Move approval of item ten-point-two-point-one.
Do I have a second? Don?
A second.
Any discussion? Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Mumgarth?
Yes.
Mr. Shavasteh?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes. Next, we have item ten-point-two-point-two, Interlocal Cooperation Agreement between Lincoln Public Schools and ESU eighteen for educational services. Kathy?
Move approval of item ten-point-two-point-two.
Lanny?
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
Just one note, just in case people are looking at this, the first one is for core services, the second one is for educational services. So they're two different things.
April, would you call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Yes.
Mr. Shavasteh?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes. Next, we have item ten-point-two-point-three, Proposed Contracts with Associate Superintendents for Business Affairs, Human Resources and Teaching and Learning and the ESU Administrator. Do we have a motion for approval? Barb?
Yes, I move approval of ten-point-two-point-three, Proposed Contracts with the Associate Superintendents for Business Affairs, Human Resources and Teaching and Learning and the ESU Administrator.
Kathy?
I would second that motion.
Any discussion? Lanny?
Our board works very closely with the Associate Superintendents, especially at the committee level. They are an outstanding team of dedicated and talented people who could easily be superintendents anywhere. In many ways, they are like virtuoso musicians, each with a different instrument, led by our superintendent as conductor. I don't know how we could function without them and I'm happy to support these raises.
Any other discussion? April, would you call the roll?
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Yes.
Mr. Shavasteh?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes. We have no expedited emergency actions, no items removed consent agenda, informational items and reports. Any items from board committees? Any items from special appointments? Okay, from the superintendent?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. I'm, I'm just going to make a quick remark about Dr. Larson and my own appreciation for him. I'm not going to go through the pedigree of his career in the Lincoln Public Schools because that was done so well earlier this evening. But I just would like to say from my perspective, from the superintendent's perspective, Matt, your, your ability to make complex issues so simple when you're really reflecting on them and considering the leadership actions is, is important and useful. And for a number of years, you were doing a position so big that we had to divide it into two. And, and you did so without, you know, complaining or, and, and without missing deadlines. And you not only helped redesign that, but you agreed to stay for another year. And I thank you for that as well. And so appreciate Dr. Larson. With that, I close my report.
Anything for the monthly financial report, Liz? Okay. Announcements of upcoming events. June twenty-sixth, there's a public budget forum, six o'clock, right here at the Steve Joel District Leadership Center. During twenty-seventh, we have virtual public budget forum, six PM. July third, Lincoln High School Summer School Graduation at nine-thirty AM and Lincoln North Star Summer School Graduation at eleven AM. July twenty-third, we have a budget work session at four-thirty PM and followed by the regular board meeting at six PM. Do we have requests for closed session? Kathy?
Move the board recess and go into closed session for item number three, litigation. Item number seven, legal advice.
And that will be to follow the ESU meeting.
Following the ESU meeting.
Do I have a second? Don?
A second.
Okay, April, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Yes.
Mr. Shavasteh?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes. This meeting is adjourned. Or recessed.
I call to order this meeting of Board of Education ESU eighteen for Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. April, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Present.
Mrs. Danik?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Present.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Here.
Dr. Rowner?
Here.
Mr. Shavasteh?
Present. Excuse me, the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted and available at the entrance of the room. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have minutes from our June eleventh, twenty twenty-four board meeting for approval. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, the minutes stand as approved, as, as, stand approved as published. Next on the agenda is public comment. We don't have any blue cards, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, which. the next agenda item, which is the agenda for this meeting. Next is eight point oh for first reading. We do not have any items for the first reading. Nine is second reading, recommended for action. Nine point two point one is Interlocal Cooperation Act Agreement between Lincoln Public Schools and ESU eighteen for Core Services, number eleven zero zero one. April, is there a motion for approval? Dawn?
I move approval of item nine point two point one.
Is there a second? Barb?
I second that.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? April, can you please call the roll for approving items nine point two point one?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mr. Shavasteh?
Yes. Next is item nine point two point two, Interlocal Cooperation Act Agreement between Lincoln Public Schools and ESU eighteen for Educational Services, number eleven zero zero two. Can I have a motion for approval? Annie?
I move we approve nine point two point two, the Interlocal Cooperation Act Agreement between Lincoln Public Schools and ESU eighteen for Educational Services.
Do we have a second? Lanny?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, April, can you please call the roll to approve item nine point two point two?
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Shavasteh?
Yes. Next is item nine point two point three, Approval of Contract and Appointment of ESU eighteen Unit Administrator. Is there a motion for approval? Kathy?
Move approval of item nine point two point three, Approval of the Contract and Appointment of the ESU eighteen Unit Administrator.
Second. Lanny?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, April, would you please call the roll to approve item nine point two point three?
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mr. Shavasteh?
Yes. Next, we do not have a request for a closed session, so we are adjourned.